We're going to go ahead and get started. We do like to start our meetings on time and hopefully end them on time to give you a chance to meet with the candidates after the forum. We will not have time to take questions from the audience at this time, so hopefully you will be able to stay and talk to everyone online after the forum. So, welcome ladies and gentlemen. This is Beaches Watch, Duval County District Two School Board Candidate Forum, Maria Mark, who is the interim president for Beaches Watch and tonight's moderator. We first like to thank Duncan Fletcher High School and our board member, Kevin Brown, who's way in back, Mr. of Sound System, for providing this wonderful venue. For those of you who are not familiar with our organization, Beaches Watch is a nonpartisan, nonprofit civic organization whose mission is to promote educated and productive citizen involvement in local and state government decisions that affect the quality of life and the future of Beaches communities. We achieve this by raising, monitoring, and researching issues, providing factual information to the general public and the government officials, encourage citizen participation in the solutions to the beaches growth and quality of life issues, and organizing citizens for action. We also do these things like post candidate forums so that you can make a more decision when you go to cash your ballot. Tonight, I would like to welcome all five candidates who are unqualified for the school board position, and I'd like to thank them for putting themselves out there in this public service. It's a very important position for all of us. Starting to my left, we have Elizabeth Anderson, Casey Ayers, Shannon Beetham, Sandy Hall, and David Hall. Our timekeeper is Sarah Bott, who serves on our program committee. She is going to give you a thirty-second time warning, and then it's the time's up. And if you go over your time, I have a hook back here. Please. I'm just kidding. She'll ring the bell. That's the bell. Very good. Thank you, Sarah. I will rotate the questions so that no one candidate is always going first or last. For those of you in the audience, hopefully you picked up one of our programs. If you look on the map, those are listed are the written questions that we've sent to each of the candidates. They have by Sunday midnight to submit their responses, and then you will post those responses on our website, on Beaches Watch's website. We are also videotaping this forum, so in the event that your friends have missed it or maybe you wanted to go back and hear some of the answers again, that will also be posted on our website. So, before we begin, I mean, sorry, instruction is here. So due to the number of candidates and to ensure each candidate has equal time, all candidates will have two minutes to give your introductory statements and two minutes to answer each question. So if there's time at the end of the question period, you'll have two minutes for closing statements as well. Okay? So, before we begin, are there any questions on the candidates? All right. So we will start, we'll start athletically, so we will start with Elizabeth Anderson, and she will start with her introduction statement, and then we'll just proceed following Elizabeth. Okay? I'll be asking the questions from down there, so feel free to use the podium or the microphone. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Beaches Watch, for hosting this. We really appreciate giving us an opportunity to share. And I would also thank all of you for coming out and interacting tonight and for participating in this process. My name is Elizabeth Anderson. I am a licensed mental health counselor and a former Duval County teacher. I have spent my career working and advocating for children. I work in a nonprofit community-based mental health program, managing a team of therapists there, and the work we do is in school and in home. And I also have a private practice serving the Beaches communities, especially with teens and parents as well. In my work as a mental health counselor, I have been to nearly half of the schools in Duval County, advocating and working on things like the youth management and programs of full-service schools, helping to remove non-academic barriers to success. And then, of course, I've spent plenty of time in the classroom. I was an English teacher. I taught at White High School and at Terry Harper High School, and in that's how I got a real understanding of the challenges that our teachers are facing, the challenges that our schools are facing, and the difficult decisions that our administrators in our district have to make in order to meet the needs of our kids. Again, my warning today because I think that there is a need for representative on the school board that has an understanding of our kids' needs, that really understands children, and that is able to advocate for social, emotional, and mental health needs. It's a conversation that is growing, and there's a lot of earmarked money to be spent on these policies, and somebody needs to be in sharing a good plan and making sure that what's happening is in the best interest of all of our kids. Thanks so much.
Hi, Sarah. Casey Ayers, thank you for being here tonight. I am running because I think we have an incredible opportunity to increase the value of our students' education. To do this, we start by making sure that each of our middle and high school, each of our middle and high schools offer either a career or a magnet specialty program. And then within these magnet and career specialty programs, we should be adjusting our curriculum, making changes so that they can align with industry-recognized certifications. The reason for this is similar to the reason why someone might take an AP course where at the end it's going to be an exam, and if they're able to objectively show that certain skills that they're gaining, they're able to not take that class to college. Just the same, adding a certification to a resume can help a student get a high-paying job right out of school, be further ahead if they continue on to a tactical or vocational tool of some sort moving forward, as well as furnish their college application should they continue on to college or university. Along with doing this, we also have a unique opportunity to work better with our local businesses and the community at large by showing them how greatly students are going to need in terms of helping to fill the skills gap for a lot of our different companies. Certification programs that are included in this include areas like IT, healthcare, aviation, traditional vocational fields, everything as far as even firefighting or EMT. There's over a hundred possibilities here in total, and one of the greatest things about it is that by aligning our curriculum toward these programs, we can unlock additional state funding that already exists. Four hundred to eight hundred dollars per student per certification will be awarded to our schools when those students successfully pass certification exams, making these programs sustainable and helping all of our students definitely in the future. Thank you.
Good evening, and thank you, Beaches Watch, for hosting this forum. My name is Shannon Beetham, and I am here tonight because I'm passionate about education, and I truly believe preparing our students for life after graduation is one of the most important things we can do as parents, teachers, and as a community. I have a master's degree in education from the University of Florida, and I've taught special education at the elementary and middle school level, including a few years here in Duval County. When the school board needs to make decisions about assessments or curriculum, I can offer the perspective of a teacher because I've been in our classrooms, teaching our students. I live here in Jacksonville Beach, and in a little over a week, my kids will be heading back to two of our great schools, Seabreeze Elementary and Fletcher Middle. I think it's important with the candidate you pick, understand from a parent perspective the issues and concerns parents have about our District Two schools. For the last five years, I've been in our District Two schools volunteering hundreds of hours tutoring students, setting up community events, raising money for educational programs, and creating partnerships with local businesses. As a volunteer, I come up with a unique perspective of how we can expand community outreach and grow business partnerships. Based on my time spent in the schools and the work I've done alongside parents, teachers, and administrators, I think there's some key areas our school board should be focusing on. First of all, ensuring the safety and security of our students. Our school must be a safe place for our kids as well as our staff and teachers. Second, I believe in order to create well-rounded students, we need to support supplemental programs such as the arts, STEM, and vocational education, just to name a few. As a district, we must make sure our students are prepared for whatever awaits them after graduation. And finally, I believe we must support our teachers. We have some amazing teachers in District Two, and I know because I've worked alongside them and they have taught my own children. And we must also have a job to ensure that they have the tools they need to help our students be successful. Thank you.
Thank you for coming out this evening. It is this intrepid weather. It really attests to your commitment to education as well. First, I'd like to thank the Beaches Watch group for having this event this evening. Mayor Glasser for being here, former Mayor Sandy Holden, and Marie Marks for standing in for Beaches Watch, doing such a great job. I've been here in District Two, this very same district, for close to thirty years now, so I'm well-invested in this community. I'm a member of Beaches Watch. I'm a member of the Community Development Agency. I'm a board member for the library and for the, sorry, for the museum. And so, I've known a lot of this community. I know what it means. I ran for the school board about forty years ago, and so I have three things that we should focus on in my background. But first, let me tell you about Sam Hall. I grew up in a family, I'm a third generation of educators, my parents were educators, my mother was a teacher, my grandparents were teachers, and so it's in my DNA to be able to work for the school board. And so that is my primary reason for running, no other reason other than to make sure that we have a good quality education here in the Duval County public school system. Now, my background is in science. I have a degree in biology, a minor in chemistry. I worked with international corporations that were leaders, Merck Foods, Lufthansa, Anheuser-Busch, and microbiology. But now, the three things that I'd like to focus on, the safety in our schools, we need to have an efficient, equitable budget, and we want to focus on the whole child, and I like to focus on STEAM, as science, technology, engineering, the arts, and math. So with that, I would look forward to taking your questions. Thank you.
All right. Well, thanks for you. Thank you, Sandy, and the rest of the Beaches Watch board. I had two roundtable forums myself, but my turnout wasn't quite as big as this, so I appreciate that you did bring people in so they could hear our perspectives. My name is Dick Howland. I'm a Navy veteran. I'm a business leader. I'm a father of two kids in Duval County Public Schools. I got a fifth grader who goes to Jacksonville Beach, and a middle schooler in Atlantic, July Land. I've lived in this district for twelve years, nearly twelve years. I've served on the First Coast Native Actors Association Board, the City of Jacksonville's Powermental Protection Board for eight years, including the last as chair. I've served on six local and international board boards. I've wanted to be on the school board and get involved and try to help improve education in Duval County since my kid entered Chester seven years ago. My dad was on my school board. My mom helped found a charter in the air city part of Chicago that helped provide better education for a Latino neighborhood and their children. My wife and I both went to public schools, so public education is in my blood and in similar ways in Sam's DNA. One year after moving here, my wife and I decided that Jacksonville's the place we want to live and never want to leave, and one of the things that we have determined, my wife and I since we've been here, is that there's two things holding the city back from being a great second-tier city in this country on the equivalency of the Denver, Portland, or Indianapolis or in Austin, and that's climate education. My plan to help fix education leverages twenty-five years of business and military experience. I would focus on school safety. I would focus on achieving better educational outcomes for our kids through better compensation for teachers and through more school options for our kids. I would also leverage that business experience to focus on fiscal responsibility and something our school board is desperately in need of. I am not a politician. I believe in CNN. My answer is that I take a very critical approach to solving these issues here with the group. So thank you very much, Dick Howland, School Board, District Two.
Thank you. Okay, our first question will go to Casey Ayers. So if you want to go ahead and send the question, I'll ask the question. Please feel free to have me repeat it if you need me to. So please define what you think your role as a school board member is.
It's a great question because this is a war of seven people. None of whom can do anything under oath. You have to work together. You have to be able to collaborate, and even then, you have to be able to work with the superintendent, with your educators, with the staff of the Duval County School System in order to achieve change. And so I think in order to be successful, you need to have a balance, a very specific idea of what we can do in order to help brand new value to our children's education. But you also need to be flexible in your approach, be able to collaborate and communicate well with others, be able to represent members within your district, whether they go to schools within the district or if they are leaving schools outside of the district as well. I know within District Two, we have students not only attending here at Fletcher, but also First Coast and Atlantic Coast, not to mention the number of students that might be in the number of our different magnet programs choosing to take advantage of one of our other great programs in Duval. And so it's important for the board to realize that while we might be elected at a per-district basis, we all have a not large responsibility to look after every student's well-being, every student's future, and understand that only by bringing together all of the tools and all of the assets we have available to us within this district can we best serve the students that live right here in District Two.
Thank you. Ms. Beetham?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure. Please define what you think your role is as a school board member.
Well, I think the primary goal of the school board member is to work collaboratively with the other school board members to represent the district as a whole. Some of these responsibilities would be budgeting, ensuring that we have great programs throughout our district, and finding a balance between representing the constituents of District Two as well as the entire district as a whole. District Two is very unique. We are one of the highest-achieving districts in Duval County, but at the same time, I feel like Duval County as a whole is only as strong as our weakest schools. So if we have failing schools in other areas of town, then we are failing as a district. And we can be doing great out here at the beach, but that doesn't mean that we don't need to improve other areas of our Duval County schools. So yes, budgeting, studying policy, helping the superintendent guide as we make changes, could it be to curriculum or any other student safety concerns. So overall, that's what I think.
Thank you. Mr. Hall?
Same question.
Yes, you all get the same question.
But yes, the primary responsibility of the school board is a fiduciary responsibility. We have to ensure that our children have the resources that they need. If there's a budgetary shortfall, it falls on the shoulders of the school board, and the school board's other responsibility is to ensure that our superintendent is doing the job that this person is supposed to do. We value the superintendent. We assure that the funds are there to fund the various programs that the school need, and look for other resources as well. We really need to look for another revenue stream to ensure that we do not fall into the same trap of having a budgetary shortfall. And have some long-range planning. Part of the responsibility of the school board is to do some strategic planning, not one year, not one year, each year, planning on one, but strategic planning for long-range plans, let's say ten, ten years out. I know Jacksonville Public Education Fund has had a program where we would have 2015 a year, 2015, we're already planning for that, and that's the kind of mindset the school board needs, to have long-range plans, produce your responsibility, and ensure that the superintendent is doing an outstanding job. So that's where we stand on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Howland?
Good answers from all of them. I agree that the school board's main function is basically to act as the board to the chief executive, which is the superintendent, and in doing so, set the strategic direction of the school district, and make sure that that chief executive, the superintendent, has the resources to act and implement that strategic direction. But more importantly, for the next four years, for this addition, moving forward and forward, the most important thing to do is governance. We've had a breakdown in governance the last four years. We've had school members squabble with each other. We've had school board members squabble with each other. We've had school board members kick the superintendent out. I spoke with a former school board member in District Two two times ago, a fellow who said that when the school board gets in conflict with the superintendent, our kids lose three quality years, and the year that the superintendent leaves, the year takes just the time to do it, and the first year takes to onboard and be superintendent. To me, governance is going to be critical in the next four years. We need to get the board working together. We need to get the board working with Dr. Diana Green, the superintendent, and in that way, I believe we can establish a strategic direction for our school system and achieve better educational outcomes for our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Ms. Beetham? I'm sorry. Ms. Anderson, I'm sorry.
I agree with Nick. There's a lot that's already been sent about the school board, members' position, and it's to do with Duval County, but I'll add a couple things. So not only are we the board, the CEO, not only do we need to make those strategic, long-range plans, make sure that we're ensuring governance over a set of budgets, of course, those are all really important things, but I really think that it's important for our school board members to be a check and balance, that we can question practices that we're not sure of, that we're making sure that the policies that are being implemented and the way that those policies are being implemented are really in the best interest of children, and those are in the best interest of our teachers and our schools and our public school system. We are representing community. I'm representing New Year in District Two, and it's important for me to advocate for you, for your needs, and also for the needs of our childrens and our teachers and our schools. And so, of course, a big part of that is working collaboratively with our superintendent and together as a board, but advocating is really important. We also need to be partnering with other community organizations, local businesses, and that is the job of a school board member. We need to get out, we need to be part of this community. We need to be talking to people. We need to be creating those relationships that are going to help support our kids at a local level, at state level, and talking to legislators as well. We're getting given these policy mandates that aren't really fair, and so somebody needs to be advocating at a legislative level and saying, hey, you better do better than this. We are, we are the face of District Two. We are the face of Duval County, and I also think that it's important that a school board member is remembering that we are representing and interpreting what's happening in our school system and really showing the best of what we have to offer so that parents and community members know that our Duval County public schools are a great place to be, and our kids are doing fantastic.
Thank you. All right. The next question, Ms. Beetham will start. So describe your district and what do you want to accomplish if elected.
Well, my district is fantastic. Describe our district. As I mentioned before, District Two is unique. We are located near the beach, I will tell you. My son is starting middle school at Fletcher, and went to the orientation they're doing yesterday and came home, and the highlight of the day was that they get to wear flip flops, and they're the only school that gets to wear flip flops because they're two blocks from the beach, which is one way we're unique. We have high-achieving schools. We know some of the highest-achieving schools in the entire district. I'd like to see us continue that track. We also need to make sure we're meeting the needs of all our kids. We have some schools doing some really great things to help meet the needs of not just the kids academically, but also their needs socially, emotionally. Mayport Elementary is a really great program where the department would be. I would like to see us work with other local community organizations to make sure that our kids are getting exactly what they need. Okay, thank you.
District Two is unique in itself. We have a variety of schools. We have the traditional public schools. We have a magnet school. You think we have, you have choices. But what we want to do here in District Two is make sure that our traditional public schools have the best resources that they need to ensure that our children get the best education possible. We have some good grades in our district. We have good grades here in District Two, and I know oftentimes we compare ourselves maybe to St. Johnstown, but we just don't want to be the best school district right here in this corner, but we want to be competitive on a worldwide basis, not on a regional basis. Because of the international markets, we want to make sure that we prepare our students for that as well. So we have a good start. We have good teachers. We have good principals here, and we have good resources, but we are on the one cog and wheel of seven and six other districts, so we have to work collaboratively with them as well to ensure that we have all the resources that all the schools have, not only just out here in the Beaches area over the current, but we want to educate all of our children. But one thing we want to focus on in particular is I'd like to talk about this STEAM. We want the science, the technology, the engineering, arts, and math. I'm a boy at the museum down here at the Museum of History Park, and I love that because our children go on field trips and they can be introduced to the arts as well as to the Marine Science Institute out here in Mayport. We have a whole plethora of institutes too, from great schools to, and I look forward to supporting that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question was, describe District Two.
Describe your district and what do you want to accomplish if elected.
Sure. We have a high performing district. Seventeen of our eighteen schools are either A or B. The one that's not A or B is Fletcher High, it's got a high grade, and we think they're probably A or B here in the next several weeks. We have heavily engaged parents. We have heavily engaged government officials such as Mayor Glasser and Mayor Brown and Mayor Lakum, and the local school police, which, or sorry, the local police districts, which have coordinated well with the schools to plan response times. We have not only the highest-performing district in Duval County, we have the safest district in Duval County. But what that means is while we're doing so well, we're leaving a lot of other areas around Duval County behind, and we're not able to solve our education problems in Duval County, both a real problem with educating our kids and increasing public perception unless we address some problems in those schools, in those districts. If you look at the Jacksonville Public Education Fund website, they have great detail on what schools are performing and not performing. They have a color coding. You can actually look, and blue is A, and light blue is B, and orange, C is orange, and every school is rated and plotted out on that map. And if you look at that map, you see the Beaches area, Intercoastal West, a lot of blue and light blue, maybe or A for these schools. You go to the Northwest part, and you see a lot of oranges, which are Cs, and greens, which are Bs. Frankly, green is a bad grade. But what that means is, you know, if you look at our district, we're getting the best teachers here because people want to work here. We're not getting as great and top-performing teachers in some of the other districts. So one of my main elements is going to be to increase and improve teacher compensation to drive the best teachers in Duval County, attract, recruit them, and keep them, and reward them. So we are one of the districts with the best place to work for teachers and start getting better performance out of these schools. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Can you repeat the second part of the question? I just want to make sure. Yeah, she says, describe your district and what do you want to accomplish if elected.
So, well, first, I'd like to describe the district. District Two is a community of beachgoers and Jags fans and Shrimps fans. We are not only the Beaches communities, but we're also the Intercoastal West, and that is a very diverse population. I love the Beaches communities because they're just these little small towns, and they're so passionate about their little communities until they get out. You know, like when people say, they're out and they're vocal, and they're telling you what they need and what they want, and I think it's important too that we keep in mind that those Intercoastal Westerns are there as well, and that they have needs for their schools, that they have needs for their children. And so I think District Two, although it's very, very high-achieving, the needs that we have are pretty diverse, and I think that's a little different up here at the Beaches than it is in District Two. So my plan is for making sure that we are achieving. I would really like to bring Duval County up to an A district, and I think that we have the potential to do that. I think that District Two is really helping that cause. Like was mentioned, we already have some great high-performing schools as a B district, but I don't believe that attending for our children's social and emotional needs is the last piece of that puzzle. We have one percentage point to get to an A, and I think that putting in place more focus on training our teachers and training our students to understand self-regulation, self-awareness... self-awareness, social awareness, and regulating themselves is going to be really important. That's going to be that last piece to piece to help our kids achieve and maybe ready for careers, ready for testing, ready to enter the classroom and learn and achieve their potential. Thank you.
District Two is easy to describe. It's square, pretty much, if you look on the map. If you started Kernin and just worked your way to the beach, if you started JGB and just worked up to Mayport, we're the easiest district to draw, at least. But we are one of the most unique districts also because of how many different independent communities are inside this district. It's worth remembering, especially this year, the 50th anniversary of consolidation, that independence of the beach communities is something that they've always valued. And the key reason for that is because of the level of advocacy that each residents have where they live. You can see it right now. You drive down every street and see 10,000 signs against the framework development, for example. There's a high level of advocacy here on issues that residents out here at the beach care about. Everyone else who spoke before me is right. This is an A district, we've got A and B schools here. We really can lead overall for the county. We're also the wealthiest district of the seven we have within the county to work with. But one area where students within the district can't necessarily benefit as much is in the lack of both magnet and specialty career-focused programs. We don't have a magnet or a specialty here at Fletcher that can make it truly unique and a destination for students around the district the way that many other high schools within the district might. I think that's why it's important for us to make sure that each of our middle and high schools offer special, unique value that can allow students to be prepared for the careers that they might want to enter, focusing not just on the letter grade with the school or the district or the county at large might receive, but also the actual value that we're providing to our students, whether they want to begin work right away, go on to a technical vocational school, or continue on to college from there. I think that's all of our responsibility here in District Two and also for our schools at large.
Thank you. Our next question will start with Mr. Hall. So what do you consider the top three issues facing our schools, and what solutions do you propose to address those issues?
The top three issues in our school system pretty much align themselves with my platform. First, we have to have safety in our schools, we have to have safety in our classrooms, make sure that our children feel safe going to school, make sure our parents feel comfortable sending their children to school, and have a safety environment. So safety first. And then we have to manage the budget. The second priority is the budget. We have to make sure we have an applicable budget, a budget that's balanced, a budget that we have an audit, that will pass the audit, and that will comply with our standard procedures for accountability. And so, we're going to balance the budget, and if there are budgetary shortcomings, we need to do an audit to ensure that there are no wastes and make sure that there are no duplication of services, and we can bring our budget into balance. That's the second thing. And the third thing is that we want to educate the whole child. Now, you may know this phrase a lot, educating the whole child. But let me tell you, last year as well, I was a delegate with the Jacksonville Public Education Fund, and we were a feeder system that fed information to the school board to let them know what the priorities were. And educating the whole child, that's where I came from. I was on the group that formulated that idea and with that idea, and we know that that is should be part of the policy, is educating the whole child. And I will do that through science, technology, engineering, arts, and math again. I know you've heard this say that several times. So those are the top three things. We want to make sure there's safety, there's a good budget, and we're going to educate the whole child, and that's how we're going to do it.
Thank you.
Well, I mentioned my other thing with Morrison, I like to take a critical and derivative approach to solutions for education, so to stand by, not just by the not here with the data. This question also aligns with my three primary areas. School safety is number one. If you looked in 2016, '17 school year, Florida DOE tracks violent incidents in our schools across Duval County, we had 11,500 violent incidents. We have 128,000 students, so that means one in every 11 students could, it's a potential victim of violence inside our schools. If you look on the issue outside of our schools, taking Parkland as an example, there are infrastructure issues there. After Parkland, the Duval County Public Schools did a review of our facilities and found that 81 of our schools had basic security infrastructure issues to close. So, school safety is critical. Having grown businesses, particularly manufacturers, I always take the approach of putting safety first in our school system, we need to take the approach of student safety first. Second big issue I would look at is educational achievement, and I envision achieving an A grade in our district through one of two ways. One is, again, better teachers, or attracting and retaining the best teachers, rather. We have really wonderful ones, as it is. And the second point is expanding school options. You know, we have the school system, public schools, and my kids' schools, it's not the same as I went to. I just had my neighborhood schools choose from. My kids have magnets, charts, vocational programs, innovative schools focused on art, music, leadership, et cetera. You expand options, you inspire kids, and you create better learning environments. Third, I touched on this before, fiscal responsibility in governments. We came in the last school year with a $23 million gap, and part of that was improper budgeting, lack of control on spending. Coming to this school year with a $62 million gap to close, same issues that just kind of snowballed. We need better control of the budget, better fiscal responsibility, better governance. Those are my three issues. Thanks.
Thank you.
So my thought revolves around three very similar points to Sam, and I think it's a common thread because I think that we all recognize what our priorities really mean. So I think first and foremost, we have to figure out this budget situation. And I think that the board that we have right now is already doing a lot of great things, and it's just need to continue that work. They've looked really closely at how we're budgeting, amazing changes there, they've looked at appropriate cuts to be made. So I think we just need to continue that work. And in addition to that, I think that my experience working and partnering with our local community organizations is going to facilitate reaching out for additional private institutions. We need to work together with people that are already, well, ready and willing to donate time and money and resources to our public school kids. So that's one of the ways that I think it's really useful for us to be able to tackle this budget situation. The next thing I think that's really important to me, of course, is whole child achievement as well. I agree with Sam, this word gets thrown around a lot, and people don't necessarily know what that means. And so, it's not just, are we achieving high-stakes testing? Are we doing good and meeting in math? Although those things are really important, we really need to look at, are we looking at all of the different domains in the room? Are we able to challenge our children socially, emotionally? Are we looking at their movement and physical development? Are we also looking at their language and cognitive skills and the way that they're able to communicate and create relationships with other people? That's going to happen through our arts programs, but I also think that can happen through some really specific social and emotional curriculum that we can embed, or use that we already have and don't have to spend money on. And lastly, I think that we need to be prioritizing school safety. And I have a pretty specific plan for what we need to do to address that. Number one, I think we need to look at, excuse me, I just got myself distracted. We need to look at embedding social and emotional curriculum in our schools. That's going to help kids understand how to have relationships with others. We know that hurt people hurt people, and so in order to keep our kids safe, we need to make sure that we are looking at that plan. I'll tell you more about that as an example. Thanks so much. Thank you.
Obviously, school safety is on everybody's mind. It's a paramount issue, and it's one that we had to work to address as quickly as possible over just a few short summer months. The school board, as we know, before, worked with a school safety assistance program and has been able to hire some of the people that they need to fill that role. This assistant will leave about $12 an hour and can only respond in the case of an active shooter event. I don't think that that's acceptable. I don't think that the candidates that we can find for that job role are necessarily the ones that we want protecting all of our campuses, and so I think that we have a moral responsibility to have an actual sworn law enforcement officer on each of our campuses, elementary, middle, and high. The other important reason for that is because this actual resource officer can serve as just that, a resource, or a variety of the sort of violent incidents and support needs that our schools might face on a monthly basis, not just the worst-case nightmare scenario. So that's one, is we have to focus on school safety. Of course, the main thing that's been carrying that is our budget. You might have heard that we have 47 cents more per student to work with this year than we did last year. That's been a popular statistic. But even more important to me is that our schools are receiving on an inflation-adjusted basis just 70, 80%, as much funding as they were in 2008. We just don't have enough to go around. And to fix this, we need to be able to work with our state leadership. It was a big deal when the Duval delegation actually came and visited one of our schools along with school board members last spring. That shouldn't be a big deal, that should be commonplace every time you call. We need to help our local elected officials understand the needs for our schools, understand what we're doing with that money, the outcomes that we're providing for our students. And that links directly into community outreach as well, working with businesses, local philanthropists, and even alumni of our schools, asking them to give back in terms of either time or treasure the same way that our colleges and nonprofits turn to donors in order to fund their operations. If you've never received a call from your high school before, I hope you will once I've got a chance to get into this position and serve as your school board member.
Thank you.
So obviously, budget and school security are on everybody's minds. I think we plan for budget, I think we need to look into selling our school board building. It's 100,000 square feet, it's just on four to five acres right now. We have unprecedented growth in the downtown area. There's apartment buildings going on on one side, and 30 acres of parks and shops going in on the other. I'm going to be honest, I'm not a Realtor. I don't know that that's the right answer, but if there was ever a time to consider it, I believe it's now. I also think we need to look at consolidating schools that are not full. We have schools sitting at 30 to 35% occupancy. That's a waste of money. As someone whose children walk and bike to our school, I know the value of those schools and those communities, and it would break my heart to close them. But we are at a critical time, and we absolutely have to take big measures to get our budget under control. Without money, we cannot fund anything. We cannot work as a district, we cannot provide safety schools, and we cannot provide quality programs. Obviously, security and safety, and I think we need to declare that those are two very different things. We can build schools that are fortresses, but if they are not safe inside because the student conduct isn't being followed, or because we don't have resources, officers on campus, then they are not safe. I think that we need to look into ensuring that we have buzzer systems for all our schools because they don't all have buzzer systems, fencing properly, things like security cameras. You would be astonished if you knew how many security cameras Fletcher High had to monitor the entire campus. And lastly, I think we need to work on educating the whole child. My heart is with the arts. They have changed my child's life. We need to make sure that those programs are properly funded at the kindergarten all the way through 12th grade level. We need to offer our kids additional vocational education programs. Vocation should not be seen as a dumping ground for kids who aren't going to graduate. It should be an option for kids to explore other possibilities after graduation. And additionally, getting them ready for wherever they're going to go within the Duval County Public Schools. Thank you.
Okay, now, last question, we'll start with Mr. Hall. So what is your plan to improve the working relationship between the school board and the State Board of Education?
Great question. It's active engagement. I think it's active, the school board members have responsibilities to actively engage with all civic groups around here, including the Jax Chamber, various associations, the local governments, including the beaches governments, and different other government organizations such as the police organizations. State Board of Education is for sure some group that we need to reach out to as part of governments. It involves having an applicable relationship with the State Board of Education. I think that's critical. I think there's one thing that Duval County Public Schools has failed to do over the last several years, and that's publicized its successes. Yeah, we've had failures, but a lot of those failures come out in the media, whereas its successes don't. I mean, we've increased our graduation rate from 78% to 81% just over the last several years. We went from a C school five years ago to a P district, rather, to a high E district just over the last several years, and we're within a kind of arms-length grasp of being an A, and I think we can considerably achieve that over several years. I did a strong A category. So, you know, public outreach is critical, solving our public perception problem is critical. What happens when we don't have good public perception of our schools is that people make choices to leave Duval County and go to St. John's Schools. Even in our own district, you know, District Two, we have amazing schools where, you know, where our standalone district would be number two in St. John's County, and we're getting better every year. And yet, people are still leaving because they have a perception of Duval County Public Education that is formal, and this district needs to change that. We have a long way to go there, but it shouldn't be that difficult. We have lots of means for increasing our public perception and better. Thank you.
Sure. What is your plan to improve the working relationship between the Duval County Public School Board and the State Board of Education?
Sure, so I think that one of the most important things we can do is make sure that when we sit down and are talking with these boards, our own board of commissioners, and also our state board, is that we are speaking the same language. And so, I think that we need to be listening to one another, we need to be giving each other some respect to understand what their needs are and what their priorities are, so that maybe share ours and that they can listen and respect our goals. I think that's another piece that maybe has been missing for a lot of the reasons that they've mentioned. You know, I don't think it's been helpful for some of the things that have been going on within our school, our school board, and the faces that have been put out there, and what's happening with the state board, and how that information, excuse me, how we've been misrepresented, I think, across the state and to our people. And so, sitting down, talking with them, I think being able to designate more regular conversations and making regular people to have those contacts with so that we can do that often and we can do that effectively is going to be really helpful. Thank you.
I don't think we've ever been so divided as we are right now. It's an incredibly fractious and polarized period, and that's one of the things that actually drove me to this race, because of the nonpartisan nature, because of the opportunity to work together as neighbors for the one thing that we should all care about, which is our students, the future of our community. And so, I think that our relationship with the State Board of Education has to start by trying to speak the same language, much as Elizabeth Sepple. Part of that language is understanding what the board of education at the state level is trying to push over and why they're doing that. Certifications are one of the main areas that they're focused on because they are proven to provide more value to our students. There's a reason they're willing to pay 10% to 20% more per student who learns one of these. And so, we should work with them to understand how we can better tailor our curriculum in order to meet up with the standards that they're trying to help us achieve. And that's further evidence by the fact that every candidate for governor, Wayne Graham, Andrew Gillum, Chris King, Phil Levine, and Adam Puckin, and Ron DeSantis, all agree on this one issue, if nothing else, that we need to provide more value, double our efforts in vocational and technical learning, and help our students be better prepared for the future. By focusing on those areas and also life skills courses that can serve kind of like a 21st century home act where we can help our students to be better prepared after graduation, to handle more topics like making on student loans, household debt, curating their online identity so they don't get themselves in trouble in the future, as well as being able to create effective resumes. We can not only help our students in all of these areas, but also be better placed to meet matching reading standards by making our curriculum more relatable to our students, making it matter more to them. And so, I think that our relationship begins with working with whoever our next governor might be to lead the way in this important area and prepare to help us do that.
Thank you.
Well, I don't know about some of you, but I'm a parent, and I'm not really happy with our State Board of Education right now. They've done some things that I don't agree with, and I don't think are in the best interest of our kids. So while I do think it's important to have a strong working relationship with them, I also think that as a school board member, it's important to be an advocate for our kids and for our county and for our district. I feel like with some of the recent passes of legislation, one of the places where Duval County dropped the ball is educating parents and encouraging them, encouraging them to become advocates and to make noise and to write letters and make phone calls. There is
There was very little that came out about some of the bills that went through. I received information from the PTA, but I never got any help from the school board about what was going on, if you would have to go find it. And so I think that it's important to have a working relationship and I would strive to reach out to our legislature, into our school boards. But at the same time, for me, it's important to be an advocate because I represent you and your best interests and your children's best interests are my top priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
We definitely need a good working relationship and a rapport, collaboration with our state board. Just to give you an example, the state board was sent down a mandate saying that we have to put guardians in our schools, but they do not finance it. So we have a relationship with them. We can talk about the mandates that come down. And when they set the military, you know, when they start talking about the amount of money that we receive, you know, why don't we agree with them on not being able to have a working relationship with them? Now, I can be the school board, I can, full-time, I do not have a career, I retired early. So I could go to town and ask with our superintendent and the board chair if we want to advocate for our children. This is what we need to do. We need to work with our elected officials and call some names out and I say that I'm endorsing a bit like Fuller, Bird, and Arby. I'm saying this because I look at these people, I've been to the Beaches Watch when they spoke and I have a working relationship with them. This is a kind of relationship we need to foster with the state school board because when decisions are made there, they will directly impact us. So we need to have a working relationship with them. We need to have a collaboration, collaborative relationship with them, a rapport whereby when there are things that need to be done here in our school district, we can address them directly.
Thank you. Okay, you guys have done so well, staying in your two minutes of answering your questions. We do have time for closing statements if you would like to use that time. And if so, we'll start with Anderson. You have two minutes for your closing remarks.
Thank you, guys, for being here. I am a Jacksonville native. I grew up here. I am a proud of Dubal County Public Schools. This community and these kids are my passion. You know, I came into work as a licensed model of the house or specialized in children because they found me really, but I didn't leave them alone. I find children and advocating for children to be something that's very fulfilling and has been work that has, you know, driven my everyday as a wife, as a mother, as a friend, because I care so much about them. This is work that is not something for me that is a hobby or a next step. It's not about pushing a special interest. It's about love for kids and advocating for those kids and making sure that those kids are getting all of their needs met because they will be our citizens of this community and this community is really important to me. With that said, I do want to take a second to step back and talk a little bit about my plan for safety because this is an important part of what I think needs to happen for our kids. First, we need to make sure that we have that social-emotional curriculum in all schools. We need to make sure that there is suicide prevention and mental health first aid training for our students and our staff. And three, we need to develop a threat response team. So if a child is struggling or if there's a threat on campus, we can go in and wrap around the child. Four, we need to increase awareness and also a focused plan for reducing the stigma surrounding mental health because our kids aren't getting the help that they need. And that's getting in the way of their education. And when that gets in the way of their education, they're not the leader, they're not the community members that we need them to be. And five, we need to make sure that we are improving behavior management plans and supports for students rather than doing things like suspending or expelling because our kids deserve better. And I believe that our Dubal County Public Schools can be the absolute best choice for our kids.
I love Jacksonville, but it's been really hard to stay here through time. I graduated Mandarin High back in 2004. I have an economics and finance degree in 2008 from UNF. Perfect timing here in the finance world, as I'm sure you remember. And I had to go on to get into certification and take matters in my own hands. I realized that if I were able to choose where I wanted to live, I may need to find my own path. So through starting several businesses, through making courses to help others earn certifications and advanced business skills like project management and business analysis, I've been able to carve my own path in the future. I think it's an important perspective to add to our school board, given the fact that by 2030, about 50% of people will be working instead of in the contractors. They might not be traditional small business owners, but they will be managing their company of funds. And it's also important to have someone who knows exactly what it's like, who remembers clearly what it's like to be a student in our schools today, who knows what it means to get in trouble if you forgot to wear your ID or if you wanted to just wear the hand here to wrap your belt, wrap your belt buckle instead of right on your neck, who can relate to the student perspective and understands also what it takes to find, create, or identify opportunities moving into the future, not just what's on the path, but what our students are going to be stepping into. So I think it's important for us to have that representation and I will work to serve as an advocate of our students, of their perspective, of making sure that the programs we might put in place are in the best interest of increasing the value of their education, increasing the opportunities that they will have in our new economy, and making sure that the safety policies we act don't devalue their childhoods or overly restrict their ability to throw a play. I think being able to relate to them directly is really the critical perspective to have that's the one that I'll try and get into this position. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, first of all, thank you, Beaches Watch, again, for hosting this morning. It's so great to be able to come out and meet the candidates at the beach. I am not a politician. If you had told me six months ago I was going to be running for office and I'd be standing up here, I would have laughed at you. I am a parent. I was a teacher. I spent time in schools. I love our community. I love our schools. I love them so much, that's where my children go and we're happy, we love it there. I want them to be the best they can be for all our kids. What I am is a former teacher. I spent time in the classroom. I taught middle school and elementary school. I feel like I've really bring to the table a unique perspective that can offer this community what a parent sees, what a teacher sees, and as well as a member of our community sees. My family has 10 more years in Dubal County Public Schools. I realize that'll probably go by, a kid of a nine is the first seven to have flown by. But I want to see our community grow. I want to see our schools flourish. I want to see us be able to offer our kids great programs. We have fantastic teachers. We need to figure out how we can support them. We need to get our balance, our budget balance, and we need to make sure our schools are secure. Like I said, not a politician, but I hope that you will, at the very least, find out from the candidates. I applaud you all for coming out and being informed voters. Thank you.
Thank everyone for coming out this evening. I've spent the last 25 years of being an advocate for children. I've been an advocate for children by raising funds, being on Capitol campaigns, keeping children in school, mentoring the children. And this has been my passion, even though I worked in the corporate world. Even though I've worked with some of the largest countries and companies in the world, I served on these safety committees, so I know what it means to keep the children safe. Keep them safe. I work on strategic plans. I've been on Capitol campaigns so that if we're going to address the budget, I have the experience there. And being a scientist, I know that those are careers for the future, so I've been pushed for that again. So my three issues in the platform, we're going to have safety in our schools, we're going to have a balanced budget, and we're going to educate the whole child. So with that, here's a neat situation. Every four years, we have three new school board members. This year, we're going to have three new school board members. That's nothing new, but we're going to have a new superintendent, so we're going to have four new fives in there. So you need someone in there with years of experience to hit the ground running, not someone who's learning on the job. I'm the person, I have the fit, my background fits well with what the school board needs right now. And so vote for me, vote for Sam Hall, and vote for our children's best interests. Thank you.
When Scott Scharrick decided to get out of the race, I was in about 24 hours later. And for about 24 hours, I enjoyed being the only one in the race and I thought it was going to be freeze. Then one, two, three, four, seven, they're in the race and it became a competition. I didn't know how my platform would be accepted in the marketplace or Dubal County. I put out there right away in my website and my write-ups that I'm a Navy veteran and I like to talk about that because not only have I served four years as a naval officer, but so did my dad, my granddad, my great-granddad. So I absolutely understand the needs, critical needs of our main board families, all of our Navy families with over 1,000 kids in our schools. I put out there that I'm a business leader, which I am. I've moved here for a company called Arm Rollings back in 2006. My career's been dedicated to law enforcement, defense, and security. I do work with divisions for, in those industries and I'm lucky to stay here. I plan to stay here for the rest of my career in Worthen Road, Jacksonville. And I put out there that I'm a father of two. Between my two boys, we have 14 years left to school at home. So I was still in the game. And how was my platform of school safety and executive educational achievement and fiscal responsibility governance accepted? It was an accepted way better than I expected. I'm supported by Jax Biz, which is the political affiliate of the Jax Chamber. They like my approach towards fiscal responsibility. I'm endorsed by the Northeast Florida Builders Association. They like my approach to expanding school options such as magnet schools, vocational schools. I'm endorsed by the Northeast Florida Association of Realtors. They like my approach to how I would focus on helping transition Navy families. And perhaps most importantly, in our district too, we have two city councils, Council President Erin Bowman and Councilman Bill Hopper, both of whom endorse me. And I'm really honored to have their endorsements and I'd like to get your support as well. Thank you.
Okay, if we could have another round of applause for our candidates for the campaign. Just as a reminder, so this is being videotaped. It will be on our website and also the back of the program, all their ready questions that we've sent to them. So please look for their responses on our website. They should be probably posted by Monday, Monday afternoon at the latest. So thank you, guys, again. Very enlightening and wishing all the best of luck in your campaign. Thank you. Thank you for coming out.